Are you our tech support?
What's that, Hershey?
Are you our tech support?
Yes, tech support.
Tech support, excellent.
Sounds good to me.
That might be another job, so you might want to put in for, you know, a stipend for being tech support. I'm just saying.
It only sounds good by the words. I'm not really necessarily all that great. I think everybody's here.
Yep. Okay, we can get going then. Bill and I talked a little bit this afternoon about what we should be doing and we don't have a formal agenda, but I think the main thrust is to the town council, we're very interested in hearing what the planning board has been discussing and reviewing and what you have to date and then perhaps cross compare with the very brief memo I sent over on the 25th of May.
Yeah.
And see where we are with respect to medical marijuana caregiver retail store ordinances and any proposed revisions for that. I did send over late a real rough sketch to you, Bill. I didn't know if you had time to send that to the planning board members and Amy.
I didn't. Hang on, let me check it. I don't think I noticed it.
It's your personal account.
All right, let me look.
It's a
Can I see it?
I just sent it to Amy.
I'll forward it to the others.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay, let's see how to do this here. Or two.
I have it if you need me to do it, Phil.
I got it.
Okay.
Yeah, just very briefly, what we were proposing is to create offset dimensions from the center line of the central school front sidewalk and calling that zero and then simply wheeling off measurements along the sidewalk along Main Street. And but there was some information missing, like what the distance was between existing medical marijuana storefronts that we have right now are approved but not operating storefronts.
Yeah.
And those are all dimension plus the overall dimension from I just picked a spot at the crosswalk at the intersection of Main Street and where Berwick Road starts by the church and Butler Street and then all the way down to the town line at the bridge.
Okay.
So if that helps. And the other thing I measured, Bill, was the the distance from the corner of Young Street and Main down to the library. I just picked the sidewalk on the side of the building there.
Yeah.
And that was 390 feet.
Yeah, okay. Um, I guess I'll kick it off here. We got your memos from the 18th and the 25th of May and we are hang on a second here to get it up. We are general agreement with the way you're headed. What we want to do, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm looking for one more thing. I thought I had. Andy. Excuse me, let me take a second. No. I just want to say, I'll vamp while Bill is busy, but Jack, nice sketch. Well done. So.
My best felt tip effort.
It's really, it's really good. Okay, let me share my screen. Can I do that? Yeah, let me do it. Good. We had, we had talked about this a couple of times and we have annotated just some notes here to sort of focus where we are and there's not a lot of the main thing is the definition of setbacks and where they're measured from and the the distance between stores. I think what we the point was that we wanted to our original thought a year and a half ago was that, or the majority of the boards thought was that these medical storefronts are fine, they're legitimate, but it's a bit of a departure from conventional life and there's enough interest in these things that we wanted to keep them somewhat limited, not have a whole lot of them just jumping in at once before we could live with them and see what we could are comfortable with. So and the that was sort of as a the impetus of that was the way that this was all described to board members back in the summer of 2019, two years ago, was that there was a safety need and a service need for medical storefronts, marijuana storefronts because of the difficulty in acquiring cannabis for legitimate medical reasons. That was the background for the opt-in for medical storefronts that the town did. I think it's very clear now, two years later, that availability of medical marijuana is not an issue whatsoever. It sits everywhere. It's surrounding us. It's in South Berwick. It's in Elliot's and North Berwick. It's in Berwick. You don't have to go to Bitterford anymore. So the issue is more of a business issue and not a, not a medical need filling business need. So we start there. So this is the, this is the ordinance that we have and the red are just notes to make sure that the definition of caregiver retail store, make sure that the definitions are consistent with all other definitions. That may be fine. I don't know. I just want to make sure that it was. And same thing with the definition marijuana. These are minor points. This yellow stuff here is the meat of the changes. Whether it's, I think everyone understood when the ordinance came in that the setback would be from the schools as laid out at the time would get us all the way to Young Street. And then the Christian school went under or sold that parcel. So the setback from from these facilities didn't get to Young Street. And so we've had to, no one understood whatsoever that it would work that way. And we've had to approve a medical store at the 297 Main Street because we had to met the ordinance and which was across from the post office, next to the funeral home, next to the consultants, right, right in the downtown block. And that was not what anybody wanted to do, but that's where, that's the way it read as it turns out. So we had to reevaluate that. And then the other thing was the, the distance measured is in the current ordinance measured from the property line of the school to the entrance of the caregiver by the ordinary course of travel. And I didn't understand that when I didn't think about it, when I, when this went forward. But that's down sidewalks and jogs and streets and, and everybody understood that it was, most people understood that it was going to be a radius as sort of as a profile circles around things and not as the ordinary course of travel. So I think we wanted to revisit that for sure. And then, and so we have some ideas on that that line up with what the council has suggested. And then the separation of caregiver stores from each other. We felt, we recommended that be a thousand feet last time. The council adopted a much slower, much smaller setback and we want to revisit that. We think that should be 500 or 1,000 feet so that the space between stores is limited. And I just want to be sure that it was comfortable with the storefront displays and the signs that they're, that they're, they're good. But the big, the big thing is these two here. Now, Jack had summarized in a sketch and in the previous memos from your workshop that he suggested that we measure from the school, if we measure from the school, we measure from a known point, which was the intersection of the sidewalk coming out from the school to the main sidewalk in front of the school. That's fine. And if we take a thousand feet along the sidewalk along Main Street, that gets us to Lower Main Street where Lower Main Street and Berwick Road 236 takes off.
Well, Bill, this is just a slight correction is 1,000 feet is like nine feet beyond the crosswalk at, on Main at Norton Street.
Okay, right. So it's a little over 1,000 feet to the Lower Main Street.
Yeah, 1267.
Yeah, okay, 1267. So, and the discussion at our last meeting was, well, we could, we could play with that with setbacks or we could, what we're headed for here is B1 only. And we, it excludes the B1 business block on Upper Main Street. So why not do it by a setback? And then there was some question about, well, our schools forever, location forever. That might be a consideration, but is there a way to do this with a, with an overlay and to designate from Berwick Road down to beyond Fogarty's to Rollinsford? Could we, could we do that? And I think what we'd like to talk about tonight is whether that's a simpler way to do this because that's what everybody's thinking of. I'm going to come back to that in a second, but just a couple of other things here. Under the odor management, we had a carve out for prepackaged products. We were requiring active odor control with carbon systems and so forth that were engineered for each of these facilities. And that's, that's an important thing. If we learned anything, odor is become sort of these, one of the central issues with these facilities. We put a carve out for prepackaging of products because we thought, well, the prepack is not going to have any odor potential. On the three facilities that we've approved so far, they've agreed to not do this. They've agreed to put an active odor control system in the, in the facilities, no matter what. And not, then we're quibbling about whether it's prepackaged or in the future it's not packaged or things that opened up, not opened up. So we think this should go, the prepackaged out should be removed and the rest of it was fairly strong. And then there was another question about signage and we wanted to evaluate the signage to make sure that the signage is legal and it's consistent with state law. And we want to make sure that it doesn't attract kids basically with inappropriate images and so forth. So if that were fine with that, we're fine with that. We wanted to do that. Then there was a question of license transferability and you dealt with that some in your memos about if a an approval goes with the land, but the approval presumes that the owner of the land is a licensed registered caregiver. And and if they sell the property, it needs to be sold to another licensed registered caregiver who can get all the licenses required for this thing. And if this language does it, that does it, but we want to make sure that it does. I'm going to put up another figure if I can. Is that showing?
Yep.
And I, David Galbraith sent over the tax map markups from a couple of years ago when the committees were working on this. I did a real quick and dirty annotation of that. Get everybody oriented. Here's Academy Street coming in, 236 going down, Main Street past Central School, Town Hall's over here. This is a remnant from before because the old Christian school came right down to there. Now it doesn't, goes back to here because of the end. You can ignore that. You're down Main Street, main block, Scott's Court behind the Paul House next to Civil Consultants and between there and the funeral home, right across from the post office right here is, is there. And that's an approved medical facility. We have three approved medical facilities right now. That one. The one at, I forgot the number of Main Street, but they're kind of across from Lassell's on the hill there. And, and then there's the one that Mr. Acres got permitted at the original, sort of across from Fogarty's. Fogarty's right here. These are pretty close, but not exactly the locations of the approved storefronts. Here's the spot where we were talking about from Jack's suggestion where the sidewalk in the school comes out and intersection of the sidewalk on Main Street. This is 1,000 feet, pretty darn close. And as Jack described, it gets, gets almost a past Norton Street, doesn't get all the way to Berwick Road or to Lower Main Street. If we but what we're talking about really, I think, is this B1 section of Lower Main Street, which it's at where Berwick Road intersects Main Street, takes off to 236 that way. This, all the properties from that intersection to Rollinsford are included. And I think we could either do it by setback from Central School. Another question came up about setback from the library, which is here, I think. And that complicates things. You have a different setback, but I think the bottom line is we, I think we all agree that the, what we're targeting is that section of the B1, which is what we, close to what we thought we were going to get when we, when you had Young Street as the supposed limit. And then, so, so that, that's, if we can do that by a setback, if we can do that by zoning overlay, I, we don't care. The suggestions might be simpler if it's by zoning overlay somehow. So we have right now, these two guys down here are existing shops. This one's not open yet. This is, this is Pied Cow and that's a, I forgot what he's calling it, but I don't think it's open yet. This is Calvin Acres Shop. These are 500 foot distances just for comparison along Lower Main Street. So with these two shops there, I think if you had a 500 foot or a 700 foot distance between shops, I think, I think that limits, limits it to those two existing shops.
Interrupt. The, the offset distance between the one between Tibbetts and High Street and the Pied Cow further up the road is 848 feet.
Right, so.
And then, and then it's 587 feet, you know, beyond Fogarty's to the town line.
Right, so if you, if it was, if it was 500, there's no way, you couldn't, you couldn't put one between them because that's 800 between sites and there's no spot here where it's more than 500 from either one, right? And likewise the other. So it could be a 500, it could be 750, it could be 1,000, doesn't matter, I think. I think because, because they're existing. If we're looking for a blank slate here where there was nothing there, you could have one, two, three, or one, two, three on Lower Main Street. But since these two kind of bisect the, the area, we could go to 500, we go to 1,000, doesn't matter. And that would limit to two shops on Lower Main Street. With this other shop, which is, would be non-conforming with the ordinance if we change it, but it would be there till it, till it wasn't. So between this and the cleaning up of the language of odors and so forth, that's pretty much where the planning board is at this point. Unless I, if anybody on the planning board wants to make a different point, or if they didn't characterize the way we talked about the last couple of meetings, please speak up and I'm welcome to have, have other presentations of what we're thinking. Now this is, I'm sorry.
Oh. I was just going to say the one thing that Bill, could you bring up the, our suggestion thing again?
Yeah, hang on, let me find it. This here?
Yeah, um, I think, okay, the signage.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah, that is in there. There's like a part earlier that you're have some of that. So I just want to make sure that was in there.
The storefront displays?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I think we're okay with that language. That's pretty strong.
Okay.
But if there's tweaking of that, that's fine. Between the storefront displays and the signage, I think there's some question about this, this state statutes regarding signs, advertising and marketing shall be adhered to. This question whether they should be identified, what those state statutes are or whether this language is, is fine because they may change in the future. Does that cover what you're thinking about, Betsy?
Yes, yeah, just the, the advertising with, it's like, because products can't look like fruit, animals or people maybe.
Right.
And so thinking of if we were able to also say that about signs.
Yeah. The question is what, what, what legal restrictions can you put on signs?
Yeah.
And there's a question there. The understanding is that nothing's to look like a toy, doesn't look to attract people. It's not, it's not supposed to depict marijuana, I guess, but I don't know if that's explicit.
Bill, on this one, on this topic of the signs, I had compiled several questions after the last time the council meant to talk about this to send over to Phil. One specifically was, can we include language anywhere in our ordinance that specifically prohibits marijuana paraphernalia on the signs themselves? And I have not seen a response come back from Phil yet on that, but that's definitely on our radar.
Good. If, if it went that direction, I don't think we would object. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there was that smoke ring thing down at the Pied Cow, which people took umbrage at.
Yeah.
And
So my understanding, the two sections we're discussing, this is the first, another section coming, is that correct?
We're going to spend as much time as we need on the caregiver stores and if we can talk a little about the medical cultivation towards the end, that'd be fine, but the focus of tonight is the caregiver stores ordinance.
So I think one of the important parts that we as a town need to do as well is if you go to the, almost the second last page, where is it? It's so small, it's hard to find. Spot licensing.
Okay, where is it?
At the very bottom of page four, there's just like one blurb about it.
Right. I feel like that's where we can really, as a town, you know, make, make some hay for the town as well as really start to put some definition. And I think that will take a lot of you know, brain power to do. And I think that's where essentially we should be heading as well, is not just look at the rules because people find the loopholes in the rules, but really focus on the licensing as well.
Thanks, Jeff. That's a major, major point. And I know a lot of people who are listening are, have raised that as an overall objective. And I'm not against it. I think it's fine. My personal take on that is that we have two immediate things to deal with. Because the moratorium that are in place. And I, my, my feeling is we need to fix those. And then if there's a license, if there's a desire to do something more comprehensive with licensing, I think that's going to take longer than the number of weeks that we have left before these moratorium go. And as a practical matter, if we, if we could have approached it from licensing, even then, I think, I think it's going to take more discussion and more involvement of more people when you look through the licensing thing. I've, I've read what some have put forth and then I agree with the basic concept of it. There's the Windham ordinance and there's two or three others that I've seen that basically allow, and we talked about it with Phil Sossier when we met with him, that the town has every right to license marijuana facilities, even though the state allows registered caregivers to do their thing under the law, but there's no reason why this town can't also issue licenses for these businesses and extend them into stores and cultivation facilities and and that would be a way to address unauthorized facilities perhaps that, that people are talking about. And so that, so anyway, that, that, that approach is probably more comprehensive and probably better. But my view is that we're working under some timelines. We have two, two moratoria that are, that are going to expire and we need to get common sense ordinance revisions in place. It was up to me. I would take up the licensing thing after we get this taken care of. That's my view.
Can we go ahead and extend that moratorium again?
There's a, there's a question about that, Manley. Let's see, this one here is if we're, if we're making progress and we run out of time, you can do that. We've done that before with extending for 180 days. I believe this is the initial 180 day moratorium for this particular topic. Other counselors, do you recall that?
Yeah, I agree with that, Jack. I think this is our first round.
On the, on the other question about medical marijuana cultivation facilities ordinance, we're into the second renewal on that. And I think that becomes more time sensitive as we approach, I believe the expiration on date is August.
Yeah.
So but the, getting back to licensing, we, we have the Turner ordinance as an example. And, and that's a 2009, April 2019 document for their approval. It might be good to check and see if they've been challenged at all and see if there's been any court tests with that and perhaps incorporate some of that. If licensing is the way we go, I guess I would have to ask the question of what in fact would licensing do? Yeah, what is the, what is the purpose of the licensing? And and if we pass, if we pass that test and we find that licensing is appropriate, then the drafting of the language. But again, Turner has a model for it.
And Windham and a couple others, yeah.
I think I can answer the question about what would licensing do? I've had a couple of concerns since the last meeting. I was on the understanding that the state had mandated that these different facilities could be 500 square feet and I didn't realize that we could also make them come under a conditional use. But what license will do is what I'm concerned about is odor and odor for two different reasons. Let's say that if you're in a country, you're doing some of this, the odor probably is not going to affect your neighbor. But if you're in Agametikus, for instance, it could affect four or five neighbors and I think we could have an ordinance that says that odor cannot go across the property line if it does your licenses in jeopardy. And I do believe that there are machines or different equipment to make sure that the odor does not. So that, I've had friends that lived beside some of these facilities and the husband, it doesn't bother. The wife, it bothers a lot. So that's just from a health type of issue, but there's something more than that. And that is if you have one of these facilities and it's a large odor and especially if it bothers you, then you say, well, I'll just sell out. Well, you just can't just sell out because what you're going to do, you're going to lose $10,000 to $20,000 in valuation if.
I think you're breaking up there, Manley. That happens.
I just want to, want to jump in real quick on the licensing topic because I have to pop over to my daughter's graduation really quick. So on the licensing topic, at least my stance, and I think we had talked about this as a council last time, was we would like to explore, at least to have the answer, the question answered as far as sort of treating a medical marijuana storefront similar to how we treat a liquor license where there's an annual license renewal process in place and without the approval from the town council to renew that license, then the business can no longer operate. This again, was a question I had posed to Phil through Perry and Jen, and I don't think that we've gotten a response yet. And I apologize because I totally spaced about the fact that I had asked these questions and didn't have a follow-up, but that's a specific question we have asked also of Phil to see if that's a possibility for us to build some language in there so that there's an annual sort of renewal step in place in order for these businesses to continue to operate similar stuff like we do for liquor licenses as far as, you know, there's no police reports, everyone's in good standing, we're good, let's renew.
Oh, the only, the only issue with that, Mallory, and I brought it up after that, we don't have a control on our liquor license. We can have a control on a marijuana license, right?
Yep.
But even if we vote no for a liquor license, the state can still grant it because the state grants liquor licenses.
I know, I know.
Marijuana, we own it, so we can say no. That's the good part of this with a licensing piece. We, if there is a report, if there's issues from the chief of police or complaints, we cannot, we can choose not to issue them another license, unlike with a liquor license. We can actually make that decision. It's a great idea. We just have to keep the cost reasonable for the business. That's my only concern.
100%. I'm not, I don't, I do not see this as like a, you know, a way for us to just generate money. I feel like it's more of a process kind of that we're putting in place to, to just keep an eye on things. And I think, I'm hoping Phil, we can get a response from Phil on like, on some example language that we could utilize to do. And I think, I'm hoping Phil, we can get a response from Phil on like, on some example language that we could utilize to do something similar.
So the thing is that there's licenses for storefronts. There could be potentially licenses for a medical cultivation facility. Those are easy to understand. The Turner thing and the Windham thing, I believe you're licensing Ian, mom and pop caregivers that are operating legally in the state of Maine. So that anyone who's growing marijuana as a business, which is caregivers. Not, not a personal thing, but as registered caregivers, everyone would get a license. And that, that whole discussion and that, that conversation needs to be had.
Yeah. I mean, I think like just keeping the scope of though this workshop, or really like the scope of this workshop is medical marijuana storefronts. I am referring to licensing for medical marijuana storefronts and implementing a process specifically for that. I agree that, you know, licensing for all of the other uses, I think is from my perspective, something to discuss. But there's a lot more to discuss there. But talking specifically about storefronts. Personally, I would love to see us implement something where we could have an annual renewal process.
And we were urged by Phil, similar to what John was saying, was to treat these businesses the same and not discriminate in how we set our fees. But I agree with you, Bill Foley, that this is a long conversation. Kittery took a different approach with how they, how they looked at that. And I think right now if we focus on storefronts, it could be, it would be best. But I agree with you.
Yeah, I, I agree with everything else. That was the summary of my comments as well. But I just wanted to make sure it's out there so that we are recognizing the concerns of a lot of people who are listening.
I personally am not concerned about the cost of the licenses. If you go to North Buick, they got Pratt and Whitney and they got, brings in a lot of tax money and.
Oh, there it goes again.
And if we go down an industrial district and we have some of these large building that have a number of facilities. They, they have to pay a large license fee. We need to get money coming into this town other than just housing. The housing that we've approved in the last few years has been horrendous. And I'd like to see something that generates some money.
So let's tax restaurants, Manley. I'm sorry, but we gotta keep it reasonable. I, I agree we need licensing, but I'm not here to make money off a medical marijuana dealer for the town. I think it should be reasonable, like a liquor license, like anything else. It should cover our costs. If we want to do a background check or whatever to make sure it's good, it should cover all the town costs to research that. Every year to research to see if their license should be good. If you want to tack on something after that, appropriate. But it should not be a way for the town to make money to substitute for business.
And I, and I just don't agree. And I don't see any reason why we shouldn't make money. We were paying for all the policing and everything else of this industry. If you go to Buick, they've got very large facilities that have unit after unit after unit. And I don't see any good coming out of this stuff. All I see is problems and that's the way it is. That's the law. But I.
That's true. You've had your hand up for a while. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm kind of a little, a little different viewpoint on the licensing. I know one thing I would love to see is these companies being licensed ahead of time just to make sure that everything that they have is legal. Like we've received an application and we're going through all of the things and like the products weren't legal that they were selling. And we had to tell them that they had to give us new pictures of products. I would love to see, to make sure like, you know, if, if a license could cover like that they're abiding by all of the laws of the business so that we can focus more on the actual zoning part of it. That makes sense.
So on the medical storefronts, coming back to where they should be and what the setbacks would be. I think, I think that if we can figure out how to get that taken care of, that would be the primary, primary job. And then these other things are important, but I think they fall behind that. Would people agree with that outlook?
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, what, what we, in our discussion back in late May. The point was I think we needed to improve the, the offset distance measurements in some fashion. You know, throughout a suggestion, we're not wedded to that, but there needs to be some, some dimensional criteria. And so the, just as a point, this is going back a ways. When Bruce McGray was the superintendent of schools, there was a proposal to move the primary school out to where the Catholic church is right now. That failed. It didn't, didn't go through, but there was a consideration that many years ago. To actually, so things aren't forever, just like with the Bible speaks. So I think your point, Bill, of carving out a specific known zone subset is defined from intersection of Buick Road 236 and Main Street down to the state line. Is a good one for this particular land use. And then it's unambiguous about where it can go. That's where it's going to go. And we're not tied to some other land use that might move as the Bible speaks did.
Right.
We could actually have both. We could have what you were suggesting, which is like the carve out where we specifically want it. The overlay, the zoning overlay, and we'd also have the state law that tells you how far that medical stores can be from a school. That doesn't, that holds water if the school moves or not. And we could also keep our buffer as well in there so that there would be two.
Yeah, you could have a thousand feet and the zoning overlay and they don't compete with each other.
Right, right. Now, again, either, you know, I guess it's one of those like multiple choice tests, you know, A, B, C, D, or all of the above. We could do the all of the above approach with no problem.
Yeah, that would be fine.
I just wanted to follow on the subject of, of offset distances. Has the planning board considered anything with respect to the high school?
We have, we spent less time talking about that. Let me put that up. I've got it here. I'm sorry. I'll get it figured out in a second. There it is. That's the wrong one. Sorry. Let me try again. All right, this has the whole high school area down here. And I did, I did not annotate this. But this is I-1 on the east side of 236, high school property here. And this is work that was done preliminary to the ordinance work a couple of years ago. And this is a 500 foot setback from the high school. I don't know where the power line easement is here and space is not shown, but the, the power line goes across here.
It's approximately 200 feet parallel with the offset to the east from, from the highway.
Okay, so that's within this 500 feet then.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And so the idea is there that all these, I believe all these properties in the I-1 are on the other side of the power line from the high school and the highway. So.
Going, moving down towards the Rod and Gun, there was a little earthwork operation that is actually a frontage lot on, on 236.
Down here probably?
Yeah, down there somewhere.
There was Lord's Lane.
In Lord's Lane and, and the Rod and Gun Club.
Where's Rod and Gun Club? Is that before?
Right where you were actually, yep.
Okay, all right. Okay. Oh yeah. Then there's someone's got a landscaping business there or something like that.
Some kind of, they carved out some land there.
Right. And, and right. And the power lines go off this way.
Correct.
Right, okay. So, but, but all this is, is way farther than, you know, the, any setback. Once you get past the power lines, the, these are, these are way past the setbacks from the school. So not speaking for the entire board, because we didn't talk a lot about this. I don't think there's a lot of concern about the setback there because of the power lines and the new industrial road and so forth, which is up here, the, what you call it, the Punkin Town Plaza is up in there now.
Yeah.
And, and what's it, the dance works here and Howard Patton stuff is over here. So there, there, there's these lots that could be up in Patton's area. I suppose someone could do something at Punkin Town place. But I don't think the setback from the school, as long as it's the I-1, not the I-2. What, what do we have in there now? Is I-1 and I-2?
Yes.
I, I would suggest, and I'm quite sure the planning board has talked about this, taking I-2 out. Get on the other side of the highway from the school. Have, have that highway as a big buffer, have the power line as a big buffer. And, and, and a lot of this I-2 is wetlands anyway, and it competes with some other stuff. Our, our suggestion is that the table A code for these things be I-1 only.
Yeah, right now I-2 is MSP, major site plan.
Right. And I-1 is MSP, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So our suggestion, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, board, is that we only consider I-1 for either medical cultivation or these medical storefronts.
Yes, I, that's, I think that, I agree. There, and there are, you know, a fair number of houses on the west side of 236.
Yeah, now on Fife Lane, there's, I ride my bike there every morning. There's a lot of housing there. And there's houses south of the school too. There's, they're back in the, back in the lots towards Lord's Lane and so forth. It just seemed that from a land use perspective, there's a whole lot less conflict on the other side of the highway, east side of the highway. So, so we, we would suggest that for the, for that part of it, the setback is not terribly important. You call it 500 or 1,000 feet. And, but limit it to I-1 so that we don't have the complications of the I-2 side.
In the setback, I think it's important to understand where does the setback start? Does it start at the, the building of the school or the property of the school?
And I think. That's a great question, Manley. It's, it's the property. The property bounds along 236.
Right. I'm just saying in the writing of it, it needs to specifically say.
Right. It'd be the property line abutting 236. That's correct.
Yeah, we, we, we mentioned that in the memo. That there's some groundwork that needs to be done to see if the property corners actually exist. Sometimes they're, they're referred to on a block plan, but you know, rods are bounds unnecessarily.
I'll, I'll bet in 1998, when this was built, that was done pretty completely.
We just have to ground truth that.
Yeah, right, right. So, and in fact, this site, this setback assumes the property line of the high school is at these locations from the tax maps.
Yeah.
So that's, that's our feeling on the, on the I, the I-1, I-2 thing for medical storefronts. I-1 only and the, because of the power lines, the distance, and it's also uphill. It's also got a huge highway. You're not going to walk across that highway very casually. There's a, there's a natural strong buffer here between the school and anything on that side.
Yeah, I think my, my thing I would, I guess, request the town council keeping, you guys are very well aware of what, what's the town's trying to do up there already. There's a gym, I think, a bakery. There's things going up there and, you know, the town council is very pro pushing that business, which I think is great. I'm, I'm concerned only personally about having storefronts up there. Is it what, is it what we want to have as a message up in that new hopefully sort of state of the art sort of facility that we, that is being put up there?
That, if you did that, I, I don't disagree with you at all, Jeff. And if maybe this a thousand feet, that gets out to here, which catches that property, which takes that property out. Then it would probably remain, it will remain the, the patent property and these other properties south. So if we made this a thousand feet, that would take out Punkin Town Place.
Yeah.
And so, no, go ahead, Jeff. I'll, I'll come in after you.
I was just gonna also mention that we, we do have the ability and the rights as a town to say three is enough. Or two is enough. So we don't have, we can say, all right, it's going to be in the point area and define that and say what the limitations are to a maximum of three in the town and leave it at that. We don't have to let it spread all throughout. We can, we can define it.
That's right.
Before we go to a thousand feet, we might want to reach out to the owners of that complex just to see what their view is. Just because they own the building and the property. I'm pretty sure they're gonna agree with you all. But it just might be nice for the town to reach out to the gentleman that spent all the money before we make rules that limit what they can do.
That's a good point, Jeff.
That's all.
I agree very much with that.
Okay. So I think that's out, yeah, fine. And if, if the owners that were, they're actively leasing properties there now. And they're not full yet, but they're getting there. Yeah, if they, they want a little shop up there. I mean, they're, when we first started talking about this a year and a half ago, I, I used as an example, there was a, a trican place out on, in Buick, out towards North Buick. And that was a, that was a, they've since bought the entire building. But when they first went in there, they shared the building with a duty parlor and an accountant shop and other things. I think the odors drove the people out and they bought the whole place, but that was that. Cause I was, my, my wife worked out there in an office and there was no way to, to visit her or do anything there without getting blown away by odors.
I drove by, by that place, Bill, for probably six months before you mentioned what it was.
Yeah.
And I realized what it was because of their side. I never knew what it was until that meeting. And then, but I think what we wrote in our ordinance would cure that problem, right? With the order control we have and they did, Buick didn't do that.
Yeah, so, okay.
And I, again, I just, I personally, I think that this is the benefit of having good leadership in, in our, in our town council is that to the best of my knowledge, the, the owners of that property aren't on the town council, leading the town. And I personally, as a, as a citizen, would urge our town council to put the, the town's best interest and, and research that rather than necessarily the, the landowners. So that's all. But I think that's a good point to check out what's, what they're looking at too.
Me too, with the amount of money they put into that building to help support our town. And they're looking at building a second one.
Well, the town invested in the industrial roadway and all that, sewers and all that. We put a lot of, we put a lot of money down there.
Million dollars in that road. So neither one is on the town council. I can guarantee you neither person is on the town council.
But the industrial zone was also listed as a place where the public generally felt better about this business going in the first place.
Cause no, no competition residential, yes.
So I, and I'll, I have to echo, you know, we, we started this process a couple of years ago. And I feel like we've compromised and compromised and compromised until, you know, we've left them no choices of where to put anything. If you go in the industrial area, it means you have to build something and that's really expensive. And most small growers don't have the capital to do that. If we only have lower Main Street, everybody's complained that there are too many of them and there are two or three now. And, you know, I don't want to see 50 either. I'm not sure I even want to see 10. But I feel like we need to at least give them somewhere to go if they want. And it is supposed to be an industrial area after all. And I think to curtail it further isn't, I, I just don't think we should. I'm all for getting rid of the one on the west side of 236. I think I was one who suggested it. But I also think there should be some limit to how much we narrow this down. And if the guy who owns Punkin Town Place doesn't want to rent them, he doesn't have to. That's his call. So whether it's zoned for it or not, he doesn't have to rent to a medical marijuana storefront. And when people keep saying what's in the best interest of the town, I'd like to remind people that there are people in our town who use medical marijuana. That's who it benefits. When people keep saying, who does this benefit? It benefits the people who actually need this product, want to buy it in town. So there are people who actually want this here, even if they don't come to our planning board meetings or come to our town council meetings. I'm done.
No, I appreciate that very much, Mercy. But I, my remarks at the outset of this, I'll, I'll just remind of which were that two or three years ago, five years ago, it was a different marketplace for the availability of medical marijuana than it is now. So it is widely available. Sure, it should be available in reasonable locations in our town, but.
And, and Bill, I, I'll, I'll take, I have a different approach about why these were instituted. A lot of the medical marijuana caregivers who grew, grew out of their home. And a lot of them complained at the time, at least to me, and I believe this was part of the report that came out, was that they don't really like selling out of their home. They themselves have their own concerns about selling out of their home and they wanted to be able to run a legitimate business and have a storefront. Just like, you know, we don't want people selling bathtub gin out of their trunk, right? Right, and so this was an opportunity to legitimize medical marijuana and it's been legal for quite some time. And a lot of those growers wanted to be able to have a safer place for themselves and not have their family affected or their property and have a place to sell it from. So it wasn't just about availability, it was available, it's just that these growers had to sell it from home and didn't want to. So that was part of the impetus, as I understood it, of why these storefronts came into being.
Good, I agree. So Jack, where are we?
Oh, there's a lot of philosophy of and Hershey brings up good points on that and that was the the main driving force on the council back in two thousand eighteen when we started because we did have testimony of people who were having to go to Bitterfruit because that was the closest dispensary and and it was very difficult and but as you point out, Bill, the ground has changed in terms of you know, lack of availability isn't isn't a problem. What we don't know is the demand on the on the business side. We last we checked with O M P, we have approximately twenty nine licensed caregivers in town right now. Don't know where they are, but they're there, we do know that in the state of Maine right now, there's three thousand licensed caregivers serving a hundred thousand patients. And so this is a need and and I talk with the caregivers, they take their business seriously as far as the relationships they have with their clients, so. I think we're we're trying to figure out a rational process to move here, but not be overburdened and and that's where it's difficult to try and, you know, with the the ten or twelve of us have to get together and make up the collective minds of seventy four hundred as to what's best and to Jeff's point. And so we have to figure out what those compromises are. Having not voted for it initially because I thought the need was met. But we we have the ordinance now and, you know, I'm not gonna express my objections that I expressed back in January two thousand twenty. We have the ordinance right now, so we're about how do we make it better?
Right.
And end of the piers is though that the logical spot for that type of development is not just industrial, now we're morphing the industrial zone into you know, commercial industrial, so to speak, light industrial, those those sorts of applications, so I guess following along, the I one zone seems a logical spot to put that in terms of it being the least burdensome area we have in town for for townwide impact. So I guess I'm concurring with the the I one proposal, we gotta work out setbacks, I think will be consistent. We'll find out where the thousand feet comes from the the high school property and see where that falls and go along from there.
Well, and also, Jack, I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but I I think there's a shoreline protection zone, am I right?
Uh.
Right, isn't Lord's Brook or Kemp Hagan? Where Shory Brook both come out over there?
At Lord's Brook, the 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 God, what Quan Peegan Brook, which comes down through behind Howar's place, that is not shoreline. We talked about that at length when we approved him and that's not shoreline, but Lord's Brook, which is somewhere down here.
Lord's Brook is further down, up up higher, Shory's Brook's down to the town line.
Shory Brook is the one at the bottom.
Yeah, and 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 Lord's Brook is is somewhere where your cursor is right now.
Yeah, it's 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 here someplace, that is shoreline, that's named shoreline.
And I think I think Quan Peegan develops that status once it crosses the road.
It does, but Quan Peegan starts, the shoreline for Quan Peegan starts right here.
Yeah.
And but the the upland part is the not and but Lord's comes all that this is all shoreline there.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
So there's restrictions to development there, but it's not wiped out.
No, but there wasn't like a, didn't we look at it like two years ago, it was a two hundred and fifty foot setback or is it a hundred feet?
It's uh it's two hundred and fifty foot setback, but you can do certain things in that setback.
All right, okay, I just I just wanted to point that out that there are other limitations.
Yeah, it's a major restriction, there's no question about that.
I I think the industrial district is a excellent place for in the industrial district, if anybody doesn't know, you can't even have housing there. And I think the rate at which these businesses are growing and if we have quality buildings that will generate in and of itself good tax money.
As well, there will be the the same setbacks from each other up in the industrial zone as well.
Good question.
Jeff, we haven't really broached that subject as to what might be appropriate up there, that's an open question right now.
Okay, we haven't even talked about that, thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, so I guess that'll be on the planning board's list of things to do as far as consideration.
We have other stuff to do, Jack, we have, we're busy. We have a lot of projects going on, we can't keep doing this.
I don't see any reason and I don't see any reason for setbacks from the their like kind businesses, they they've got this odor problem and if they are all clustered in to a closer proximity, then they have to put up with each other, you know?
Although, there are some houses that are up there.
Yes, behind.
Right, so I think we should think about setbacks from those houses, from people that existing residential that was, I don't know if they were grandfathered into the industrialism, but they're there, so.
So that odor problem depends on which ones you go to, manly. I've been to some in Wells. You would know what was in it if you did know what was in it. So again, it's stuff that that you guys and us can work on with odor control and we can make sure there is no odor outside that building. Now, Sweet Dirt Elliot, driving by it, I can tell you when they're harvesting and doing stuff every morning, I drive to work.
Do you slow down, do you slow down?
That's just my point in licensing and not allowing the odor to cross a property line is at least if you're beside a neighbor and it happens to bother them, that doesn't ruin their life.
You're you're right on point with that and Hershey, no, I'm a federal employee, I roll up my windows and drive fast.
Good for you, John, good for you. An honest man.
Five more years.
Well, John, that just proves to me you know how to drive through Rochester.
Yes, sir, windows up, seat down, yep.
So I have a question, so regarding the setbacks and we were talking about the high school earlier. What do we do about Bricks and Dance Works, because that has a similar demographic to a school, would we want to include maybe a setback from them as well, because I know we're talking about maybe making a setback so that whole area wasn't viable for the retail stores. How do we factor in Bricks and Dance Works into that?
I think we got to overlook it like we do the library. Or any other business that's not a school, that's not listed by by the state. That's my that's my opinion, I don't I see where you're going, Keegan, and I don't disagree, but if we did it anyplace kids could be, it wouldn't be anywhere. It's it's a gray area.
And Keegan, I'll also say this, most people don't walk to Bricks and, you know, there's not a a chance of walking past something the way there might be downtown, right? People drive there, they go in the building, they take their tap dance lesson and then they leave. And though they have a tent out now, because I know, but that's COVID related and I'm assuming that will go away and they won't be outdoors at all, so that might be a little different than some of the other, you know, like having kids on playing fields and things like that. A good point.
Yeah, excellent point.
Well, we're having this discussion, it seems to me it's about time we start having open meetings again.
Oh, that's another that's another matter.
I'm gonna let I'm gonna let the town administration decide on their COVID protocols.
All right, so back, that's okay, so we'll we'll finalize some recommendations on the I one district and write them down and give them to you.
Okay. Can I, Bill, can I just toss in, just piggybacking on what Keegan said about Bricks and not a hundred percent sure where they all sit, but I think keeping in mind where daycare centers are in both that area.
There is a big daycare up at Punkin Town Place, north end.
I I see, I understand and I agree with John as far as the the library in Bricks, I'm not sure how we handle the daycares.
That's a great point.
But but once again, Jeff, you know, daycare is for preschool kids, right? And most preschool kids are not going to walk theirs themselves past an industrial building in the I one district.
Sure.
They get dropped off and they get picked up. And I, you know, aside from the smell issue, I'm not sure what effect it would ever have on a daycare.
Right, I keep thinking the smell too, that's where a lot.
No, nobody wants to be, if you don't like that, I and I don't, I don't want to be near that smell either. But don't forget, medical marijuana retail stores, the ones we have so far, we're going to have prepackaged things, they're not cultivating and they're not, you know, till we get to that discussion. And they're not, you know, they don't have open containers or as they call it, a deli style. So, you know, odor really shouldn't be an issue.
Back to downtown.
I don't know why trican does. So what?
I I just I just have to say, nobody would survive in the county with broccoli.
I think we should take it up and restrict broccoli too, actually, Betsy, I'm with you there.
Broccoli smells very bad.
I I didn't get that joke, that's bad for me.
Oh, my gosh, broccoli smells so bad and that's.
Oh, broccoli, okay.
Broccoli and yeah, the and I mean, there's no containing of broccoli.
You know where you are when you go buy one. Yes, ma'am.
So back to downtown, I think we're our our we could formalize our recommendations, but it's going to be something along this.
Yeah, there was one area that we're still investigating. And I'll read from it. Upon sale or transfer, the new proprietor or property owner shall be required to review or reapply for site plan review approval similar to application made by the prior registered caregiver, property or business owner. Did the planning board touch on that at all?
That was that was in your your workshop?
Yes.
Let me find that.
It's on the second page.
I hate to say it, but would that be redundant, I mean, I assume the state requires that, that if somebody buys somebody else's business, that they then have to be registered and licensed, no?
That's that's correct.
It's just, go ahead, John.
That's correct, but what they're looking at is use of the building.
I see what you're saying, okay.
And so it was back and forth with the council. My my my, I was on the opposite side of this a little bit because if someone's selling a business, they have to be legal by the state in order to buy the business. But if they can't sell their building along with that business, then they have a worthless business.
Yes.
So it's already granted and operating there, they should be able to sell that business as long as it's a state licensed or a state approved person buying it. That was my deal, or your business is worthless.
To quote Bill, Bill, what you sent us was saying that the planning board thinks that any nonconforming facility can remain as long as the use is continuous.
Right.
Doesn't seem fair or appropriate to impose a lapse provision. So that's what the planning board sent us, I agree with that.
I agree wholeheartedly.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, the 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 point that I was trying to make before has has nothing to do with continuance of use as a nonconforming use. But upon if if and the business can be sold and the business can be sold as a as a tenant business or the the property owner could sell the business with could sell the property with the business on it. There's no limitation on that, it's just that if the business entity changes, the thought was to have the new registered caregiver business proprietor engage with the town in some fashion, now that might be not the planning board, it might be the code enforcement officer, it might be the town council, we haven't worked that out yet, but in that way the new business proprietor can be familiar with the requirements of the original permit.
And the planning board, Bill referenced that as well, that was in the point above the one that I just read, the planning board is not concerned about transferability as long as all required licenses and registrations are demonstrated to town code enforcement officer.
Yeah, I this is a to be maybe a blunt about it, that's not a land use issue, that that that's an administration issue, we're I'm not, we weren't terribly concerned about those things.
Okay, we can deal with it, I just didn't know if it had been.
No, what we decided was we didn't have a strong feeling one way or the other on that, common sense would be applied by by you and town administration on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
As Mallory alluded to before, there we have some questions about such things that are going to go to Bernstein Shore and that that would probably affect the final draft when we propose it.
Yeah, I think it should be handled just like any other business and if they they just the license is is the only issue. And like any other business, if you stop having it for a year or something, then you you no longer have a right to continue. I don't know if it's, I think it's a year, but whatever that time period is, should be the same for this these businesses and that's my viewpoint.
Yeah.
Oh, my God, a cream with family, wow.
Beyond that, I'm not seeing much else on our list here. So if we wanted to take a few minutes to talk about where the planning board is on and I don't want to close this off if anybody else has any questions or comments with respect to medical marijuana storefronts. But we could take a few minutes to see where we are on the draft ordinance review for medical marijuana cultivation.
I'll give a brief overview, let me get the right document in front of me here. Bear with me. Here we go. Come on. Come up. The computer's not doing what it's supposed to, come on. Uh, well. Let me. I know, and it's I'm trying to bring up a word document, but it can't find, it won't come up, it's frozen. All right. So let's quit this. Stop sharing. Now everything's frozen. Can't get out, but there we go.
I hate when that.
Here we come. Okay, I think, are you back? You're back. We come to the conclusion that the structure of the, after your discussion and our discussion with Phil Sausier, that the objectives that the council had identified that back before Christmas even of A, there we we agreed that there was a potential liability or or that the agricultural argument I way I read it, I think it's not there, but it's there and 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 then that the argument would be there that you could apply that to not have site plan review and so forth for medical cultivation facilities without action, so what you the recommendation is is to define a use as medical cultivation, make a definition that's strong and 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 much the same as what's in the moratorium and so forth. And then zone that use. And we're in agreement with that. And so that it it where there's ambiguity, there's no ambiguity, there's a specificity that for anything that's like this, we're gonna make sure the definition is clear and comprehensive and accurate. But once it, once we're happy with that definition, then we zone it to in certain areas, then then it's not allowable anyplace else and we like that logic. And the same thing we're talking about earlier about the I one I two. We think I one is it, not I two. And and because it's for all the reasons we talked about for the medical storefront that is not competing with residential and all that kind of stuff. The issue is, we talked with Phil Sausier about this, this question is uh, medical cultivation, if I understand it correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the aggregation of registered caregivers under one roof? It's not someone growing themselves more than the five hundred square foot canopy. That's not allowed, if I understand it under state law. But a number of registered caregivers can aggregate themselves under a single roof, so to speak, to have a larger facility and they can experience the economies of scale of that. So some number of registered caregivers can participate in a medical grow facility. It I believe it's not broader than that, I don't believe it would allow. It, I believe it's not broader than that, I don't believe it would allow a person to grow a whole lot more than five hundred square feet of canopy by themselves, is, is there agreement on that? Yes, thank you.
I guess, I, I guess the five hundred square feet, I'm fine with that, but, uh, what I wasn't aware of until last meeting is that even the five hundred feet, we can, um, we can have it come before the planning board for a conditional use, and I think it ought to be licensed uh, for the same reason I said, if you're in agamatic states and you have a five hundred foot, uh, uh, business and you're not a good neighbor and you're letting the, uh, odors, uh, ruin your neighbor's life, and then they, even if they want to sell their property, because the odor there, it, gonna devalue when their, uh, their property and they're unable to sell it, uh.
Well, that, 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 that's not the medical grow facility that we're talking about here, the medical grows when, when two or more people join together uh, it, in a, in a single facility.
Right, and if it, in, in my view, if there's two, th- then it ought to be just, uh, like what we're doing for these, uh, all the others, but.
Yeah. So, the question is, 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 it, so, we, we, we've defined it, we've zoned it, it's the I one district, and the question is, how do we, uh, then restrict the size of it to some number of, of, of aggregated growers, or some square footage, or some other way? Betsy, you got your handle, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm still a little confused, um, regarding the number. Um, I would like to see two people be able to
Right.
coexist in a small, you know, a one thousand square foot space and a little greenhouse in someone's backyard. Um, I, you know, I would, I would prefer it be that we regulate for three or more.
Okay, tha- that's up for discussion, that's good. So, uh, and, uh, but, the question is, what's the more? And, uh, uh, is it, is it, cause there, there's, people will go, now, if they have to do it, I get a site plan review, then all the other things for site plan have nothing to do with marijuana, apply, you know, drainage, uh, stormwater control, traffic, lighting, you name it. Uh, buffers and all that kinda stuff, so, a certain site would be limited by that regardless of, of the marijuana operations. And the question is, do we want to limit the scope of approved medical cultivation facilities by either the number of caregivers that are operating in that facility or the size of the facility, so that, that's, that's where, that's where the decision point is coming down to from the, from the planning board's perspective. There's arguments that.
I like the five hundred square feet and, um, I, I'm fine with that, cause the state law mandates it. I just feel like even that needs to have a, uh, conditional use of some type.
If it's, if it's five hundred square feet, going back to what Bill just brought up, and I got a four thousand square foot building.
Right, then you're gonna have twenty people in it.
Then I can have twenty people in there, so is it better to say you can have a thousand square feet, no more than four growers in a building?
Yeah, I thought, that, that's.
In, in the industrial district, I don't see the logic for limiting it at all. The larger the building, the more the units, as long as we're, uh, getting tax dollars out of it, as long as we're getting uh, licensing fee, uh, it just doesn't make sense to limit it to me.
There, there, there's an argument on the other, I understand that, and if it's an industrial zone, why not do it that way? There's a, of, of, a point of view in this community, however, that says we, we don't wanna have mega, mega, uh, facilities going, and, uh, with, you know, forty thousand square feet, you know, eighty growers, um, and, and that's inappropriate for the scope of what we have in our town and and other potential uses of an industrial park, so, there's arguments that it should be limited to some number, that's not unlimited.
I'm glad that you guys are not us.
So, I, I sort of asked for this, and, um, I, I'm not sure we're prepared to make a recommendation tonight, but I'd, I'd really like to go take a, like, a walk up fights lane to where all those industrial buildings are and get a sense of what sizes we're talking about, because despite being an architect, actually, and a housing developer, I, I can't tell you what a two thousand versus a twenty thousand square foot warehouse is gonna look like offhand. So, it'd be great to go up and, and try to hit some sweet spot, which is a building that is the scale that I think we can live with, divide it by five hundred and say, that's so many caregivers, I'm more of the, let's do the size thing and.
Yeah, and, and, uh, of course, the, the, the building will be bigger than the five hundred square feet, cause they got common areas.
Right, well, you, you could add like a ten percent, how's that?
Yeah, whatever.
You know, but also, you know, here's the thing, if we're gonna offer it, let's, let's, we should do it, we should be somewhat genuine or sincere in it, and so, like, to say two isn't gonna make a lot of sense, like, there's no economy of scale there, I suspect. So, I, and I don't know what the number is, I don't know what that sweet spot is, but.
Five, is it ten, is it forty, we don't know.
Yeah, I definitely don't think it's forty.
Well, I, I, if you allow it, I think they'll, they'll come in and propose forty, cause here's the thing. It, we're not talking caregivers necessarily in, uh, uh, South Berwick, we're not talking caregivers necessarily in Maine.
No, you have to be licensed in Maine, Bill.
Okay, but.
You can't, you can't come from out of state, you actually have to be licensed in Maine.
And, and so, there could be people from all over the state coming down to a sweet spot down here in the southern thing, there are the highways.
Right.
And, uh, we can have, we could be attracting hundreds of registered caregivers.
Okay, let's not go crazy here. We're talking like five to ten, right?
I don't know.
That, that seems reasonable to me, we don't, nobody wants a mega marijuana.
That, that, that's the point I'm making, that's the point I put many of you, and I agree with it too.
I, I think, I don't think there's, is there anybody on the planning board who wants to see, you know, a forty person facility, I don't think so, right?
I, I don't see it, any reason why not, if we're gonna be in the industrial zone, that that zone is not being used, was not generating money, and I, if I had my brothers, I wouldn't have have it anyways, uh, but I don't have my brothers, uh, so, we're, we're having to deal with it, and if we're gonna go with it, I say, let's go for the money.
We got that, Manley.
There, there are, there are some aspects of the, the, the actual operations we're talking about here. And, um, in this si- situation, well, the way I understand it is that this is a, you can treat it as a manufacturing facility. It, it's cultivation, but essentially is, it, it's like the, um, the metering station down in LA where they haul off, uh, compressed gas uh, into, they don't have tanker trucks, that look like tanker trucks anymore, they, they, they're van type, they're, they're, it's a big box, eighteen wheeler that leaves there, and no one knows the difference, and I, I think that in this situation, the, the business plan itself is to, is, is to grow and prepare and package, and then it leaves. And the point of sale is someplace else, that's the way I understand it. And so, I think the, um, if, if this is gonna work, we, we, it's absolutely critical that we know something about the return on investment. Um, I, I think Hershey brought up the point of saying that if you're limited to, to four, well, you have to go a long way to make that make sense to somebody, as far as, um, what it takes to develop a site, and then what, what it's gonna, what, what product is gonna come out of there for sale. Uh, a- and I, I understand it's gonna go elsewhere, so, uh, that's, that's another piece that we have to think about.
Well, and I'm, I'm wondering if there's someone out there who could actually answer that question, like, what's the breaking point in the number of growers that, you know, makes sense?
Yeah, now, there's another piece to this that, I just, you know, okay, we have twenty nine caregivers in town, that's canopy of fourteen thousand five hundred square feet, just did the math. Uh, and if we have odor problems with people growing, doing backyard kinda things, if, if that exists, I don't know if there's a problem, we haven't been notified of any, any problem.
It's a problem, you, you talk to people, it's a problem.
Okay, but the aggregation of growers into a controlled facility to me would help mitigate that particular odor problem. So, in that sense, you have it under control, you have the environmental controls within the building, and then that takes care of another neighborhood problem, which is the, you know, my bottom line is, that's what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to protect the neighborhoods.
I don't, I don't think necessarily that people who would go in this facility, at least anecdotally from the people I know, can afford to actually build and move into a place like that. So, it, it's very determined on who has that kind of capital, right? And a lot of the small growers in town who are the medical marijuana, these twenty nine growers, I can think of one or two who can't afford to that and wouldn't do it. They're just gonna stay where they are and continue doing what they are, and, you know, not, eh, not bothering anybody. And I'm not talking about the guy at one sixty one, I think that's an abomination, but that's a whole different story, so.
I think, I think, I think that, that, this would, as a business, it was, it's not, it's not taking people from South Berwick and taking care of them, it's gonna attract ambitious money oriented growers. Not, 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 not medical caregiver growers, it's gonna attack, attract the money interest. And I, I think we'd be naive to think it, it wouldn't, so, it would, it would be maximized by the dollars that could be, uh, made in the commercial wor- world of registered caregivers from wherever they come and may. That's my thing, so, that's why, that's why I would like to limit it.
This is where you tack them to the license. I, I'm, I'm, I'm going for a fair license for medical caregivers selling it, but if this is a grow, this is where we can actually, I know Wells charges a very large amount for each grower in the building that the town gets. Um, we're talking a lot of money for four growers in a building. So, I, 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 I agree with limiting it, but again, this is where, I agree with you, Bill, we're gonna track people with money that are come in, cause this is a money business.
Right.
This is where, if we wanna charge ten thousand dollars a year for a license, they're gonna pay it and walk away laughing.
Right.
Right, but we were urged by Phil, our attorney, to, to be careful with, um, not discriminating based on business, and the safest way would be to look at kinda like the median for the area, um, and also look at exactly what our costs would be, uh, to facilitate these businesses.
Wells is getting around fifteen per.
There's definitely gonna be money coming in from it, I, I just wanna follow the legal counsel too.
Well, you're talking about covering costs, there, there's gonna be a lot of costs associated with this.
Yeah.
Marketing, the, the code enforcement, whatever the reporting stuff is, whatever, police, whatever, uh, not so nice people show up at these locations. Jeff?
I just wanted to chime into, um, a little bit about, I don't, I, I don't think that the ordinance should, uh, limit the number of people, I think it should limit the square footage allowed. Cause I'm concerned that the state will change and might start allowing, I actually believe they're already underway, just starting to allow the grouping together, right now, I believe it's illegal, but I think that they're working on trying to make it okay. And that would sort of dissolve anything we're talking about right now, however, if we focus on the square footage, it would still be a real ordinance.
Right, gotcha.
That, that we need to be thinking about also, and we, we've had, you know, since, I don't know how long ago, um, we've had licensed, uh, dispensaries. And I, I think it's up to fourteen, it started out with eight, now I think it's up to fourteen or something like that, um, and when I sat in the public hearing for the rules changes, I believe the dispensary piece is gonna go to unlimited. So, that's another piece that we may wish to investigate or learn more about in terms of what our overall risk profile would be, you know, dispensaries started coming in as well.
Yeah.
Also, I, I think, I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, I think that the draft had, um, mentioned about all plants, all this stuff is, is being actually produced on site. Um, Dave might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, I thought that it said that in there, and I just wasn't sure about how we manage and track to hold people accountable that they actually, you know, I can bring a house plant in from Walmart, or I can pull it out of my, my yard, you guys aren't gonna know the difference, you know, um, so I just don't know how we, how that becomes an, uh, accountability thing.
There, there's a, in, in the, 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 the mom and pop operations are, are dead set against this. Uh, but there's a movement, and I think it reflects, um, increased overhead, which is more conducive to larger scale operations, you know, money from outside the state, that sort of thing, uh, where they're proposing to go from seed to sale, so to speak. Where you would actually have barcodes on your, your seeds and your, your plants, and they would go all the way through production in terms of its final, uh, form for sale. And, and, and so, those could be, you know, call it cradle to grave, kinda, kinda documentation. But, the, the, the mom and pop operation, caregivers are saying, wow, that's gonna add a lot, just as they were talking about enhanced security systems and can't.
Yeah, I mean.
Yes, video and all that stuff.
That, 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 that seems to me that te- tension in this thing is, is between the, the, the true mom and pop people and the big money interest, they're, they're two totally different things.
Hundred percent, hundred percent, there's, there, there, the, the, the large money is scaring the heck out of the three thousand licensed caregivers in the state right now.
Um, Jack, I gotta, I, I, I was gonna, I had a, a, a thing I gotta do at eight, so it's getting, they're close, so I'm gonna need to step off in a few minutes.
I, I, I'm gonna have to also, but to answer the question about how do we monitor whether or not they're, um, got the right number of plants, I don't think we need to waste much time about that, I think we need to waste more time about making sure the odor is contained and the neighbors are not being, uh, bothered and leave it to them people to be, uh, good citizens, to follow the, uh, the rules, that's my own viewpoint.
So, you can only grow so many, so many plants in a certain amount of square footage. Because of the height they get, the width they get, the nutrients, the light, the oxygen level, the moisture, sounds like I know a whole ton about this. I might know a few people that actually do this for a living, and install heating and cooling. Um, so, you are very limited with the space, no matter what you do. Uh, we could only put so many tomato plants, you can only put so many marijuana plants.
Okay.
So, it is self-regulating.
Alright, no, I didn't know that, thank you, John. And also, just wanted to mention also, I, I see where we just talked about retail stores, these are gonna be marijuana cultivation and retail stores in the front of, in the front of these things too, I think that's, uh, we're gonna see that.
I'd rather not, I'd rather keep it separate.
I agree, I think that's what we're gonna end up seeing, if we don't, if we don't write it in there, so it's separated.
Agreed.
I, I'd like to see.
Before we head out, David had his hand up, and before we lose Bill and, and Manley, uh, David, why don't you chime in?
Yeah, I'll try and be quick, there was a couple of things that we did at the, one of the last reviews at the, at the planning board, and we had this discussion about the small time growers compared to large, uh, growing facilities where you have a large building, so that's why we started working on language that said you could have two home growers under one roof maximum, anything over that, you become a commercial entity. And that, that's how we did it, cause, and you could also impose, um, odor control ordinances on anybody, but the only one we, uh, the only way that you're gonna really know about the home users or home growers uh, is gonna be by complaint by a neighbor, and you can have something in there saying, okay, you need to get scrubbers in here or whatever, but we were before focusing on, you know, really big, uh, bigger, uh, big growing units. The other thing that I wanted to, uh, mention was, right now, we allow storefronts, medical marijuana storefronts uh, in the W, uh, excuse me, I one and I two. Um, and we've been talking about growing, uh, medical growing in those same facilities, now we're just gonna do it with I one. So, do we, we, do you want that taken out of the industrial district, that you can't have a, a store?
No, we, we, we spent, we're, we're, we're saying that the storefront could be in I one tonight.
Could it be attached to a growing, uh, medical marijuana growing facility? That's, that's what I wanted to clarify, so you could have a freestanding store.
On the same site as a grow?
Well, I, that's naturally what would probably happen, I mean, if you're growing it on site, you've got a bunch of different growers, but you know, how many growers are you gonna suddenly be selling to clients and?
That's a very good, that's a very good, so, yeah, I hadn't, I hadn't thought about that, David, thank you.
Well, um, I guess the time has come, it's, it's seven fifty eight here, I got eight oh one on the computer. Um, do, do we have anything else that we need to discuss at this point in time before we move ahead?
I'd like to just thank the planning board for all their hard work, you guys have been killing it, and I appreciate it greatly.
Well, we'll, we'll try to keep this targeted, and we'll try to wrap up, uh, outline of recommendations to you. Well, we'll, we'll try to keep this targeted and we'll try to wrap up a outline of recommendations to you as fast as possible on all these things.
Thank you. Being that we're not all as educated as John is with regards to how marijuana is grown, it might be a good idea for us to maybe reach out to some in the area uh growers and take a tour and see if they would be willing to show us around. I
Let me know.
I, I would love to be, have more education. So when we're talking about these things, we had just a, a picture in mind because we know what, that's, that size. And okay, that is more what the process looks like.
I'd like it for kind forms.
Yeah, I know the guys from Sweet Dirt pretty well. Um, because I work with them down in uh Elliott. If you'd like, I could reach out to them. They, I had a really decent working relationship with them. We don't know what's get along, but you know.
That would be great.
Okay. Let me see if I can.
I agree.
And then I didn't want to cut off John thanking the planning board. You all have been putting in a lot of hours. And you've got a lot on your plate and, and we appreciate it.
Well, thank you. This has been, this has been an important issue and it, it was really focused by the damn petition articles that you needed strong recommendations from us on, and we were happy to do that.
Well, and, and thank you, town council. You have done likewise, I believe, in that you've put your nose to the grindstone on this issue as well.
Yeah. As I, I was talking to Hershey the other day. Uh, we were, we're, we'd like to get back to when we were plant, doing the planning board and there's no marijuana wars going on.
And it's just boring and no one shows up at all. It was so great back then. I used to think, oh my God, but now, now I yearn for it.
We want people to come. That's a great thing.
I just want to also encourage everybody to stop by Bill's house. I'm going to invite the bill and get a tour of the pumpkins before they're huge because it's really fascinating to hear how nuanced growing 1,000 pound pumpkins really is.
It's harder than pot, I think.
Yes, no, it's true. I think we should pass an ordinance about them actually. So I don't know. I don't know if I'm going on in my backyard, all those pumpkins.
They don't smell. Not unless, not unless they're rotting. Um, Bill, I, I had, I had uh been taking notes all the time, which is why I didn't have my screen showing. I think I, I've been, like I said, I've taken tons of notes from everyone and I can, I think, uh, and I made contact with you uh directly, but I think I could pull something together from you for this Wednesday's meeting if the board wants to discuss it. That's fantastic. Thank you, David.
Okay.
Okay, I got to head off. Thanks a lot, everybody.
Bill, uh, just one other thing. You had some graphics and some other materials. Um, does, does Amy have those?
I'll send them to her.
Okay, great.
Yeah, okay, great.
Okay, thank you all very much. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Good night.
Bye.